Good afternoon. We have a quorum. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills. Bill number 23-0470, and that's a rezoning for 2529 Georgetown Road. And then we have Legislative Oversight 24-0058, Department of Housing and Community Development Fixed Pricing Policy. Previously today, we had the hearing, we were supposed to have the hearing for the following bill. It has been rescheduled for March 26th. And that's Bill number 23-0357, Strengthening Renters Safety Act. Dates for these hearings will be announced at future council meetings. In attendance, we have President Nick Mosby. We also have members of the committee. John Bullock of the Ninth District. Mark Conway has an excused absence. He is in Annapolis at this time. And we have Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District, Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District, and Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. Ryan Dorsey absent. And we also have sponsor of this first bill, Felicia Porter of the Tenth District. And another representative from the office of the President is Tiffany Macklin, Deputy Director for Legislation. And from the Mayor's Office, we have J.D. Merrill, which is the Deputy Chief of Staff, and also Tyler Chanel with Government Relations. So, Bill number 23-0470, rezoning for 2529 Georgetown Road. This bill was introduced on September 18th, 2024. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Porter. Councilmember Porter, would you like to comment?
Thank you. This is a rezoning bill in the Mall Park community. The reason why it kind of took so long for the rezoning to come to the committee is that I required a significant community engagement process with the residents surrounding Georgetown Road, but also with the community association. So, I look forward to a favorable discussion and a favorable report moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And on that note, we will hear get agency reports, and we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office, we approve the bill for forming legal sufficiency so long as the correct findings of act are made.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis here from Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Department of Planning.
Madam Chair, Tyler Chanel, on behalf of Planning. Planning Commission concurs with the recommendation of its departmental staff, adopts the finance and equity analysis outlined in the staff report with consideration for testimony and facts presented in the meeting and is part of a meeting on October 12th, and recommends that the City Council approve this bill.
Thank you. And Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas H for the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. One correction. I believe the bill we're discussing is 230430, not 0470.
Repeat that again.
23-0430.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For catching that.
And then Parking Authority stands by our bill report, which is requesting a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation.
Tyler Chanel, again, Madam Chair. BDC stands by its favorable bill report.
Thank you. And BMZA.
Tyler Chanel from BMZA. And BMZA defers to the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And so, all reports are favorable. Do committee members have any comments or questions at this time? We will now begin with in-person testimony. Okay. Doris Moran, are you for this particular rezoning bill for Georgetown? You want to come on up. State your, press that button to the right. You can pull that, you can pull that down and press the button to your left. There you go.
To my left?
You're got it.
I got it. You said right, so I did right.
It's on. Thank you.
Okay. I am not.
State your name and who you are.
My name is Doris Moran. I live at 1505 Parksia Avenue. This abuts my property. I've been there 52 years. I am not opposed to them being there. I have so much. You guys put I-95 at the top of my hill, my street. Now, if they put up a big building and block that view that I've gotten used to, you're taking away my view of the highway, watching the cops and everything else going down I-95. I have at the bottom of my hill stream, and the people at the bottom of the hill put in a, they have a house there. They've put a business in there. They do tree trimming and shredding and this. And you can't even get in to see Gwynne Falls at the bottom of my street. It's Gwynne Falls Stream. And you can't, it's that tall. You can't even, from one side of the street to the other because of shrubbery, this, that, and the other thing. You can't even get in there to see if it's healthy or not. I have deer like crazy to come into my yard that I've had since I've been there. All the way to the bottom of the property is my yard, according to my landlady, who I rented it from in 1971. And she said, "That is your ground. You take care of that ground. That belongs with your house." There's a house next to it. And then Georgetown Road goes from that end to that end. Parksia Avenue to this. A new building has come up behind me there, where it used to be two houses, and the state took because, and put them old people out of there because of the highway, making that highway. That's two houses that went. The house Georgetown Road right here burnt as soon as the people moved out because they was afraid of all this stuff coming with this stuff and different things. They got scared and moved. They moved out. All of a sudden, their house burned down. This house down here, in a February, freezing cold, ice coming out of the things and the trees in front of the house. That house in February with nobody in it because they moved out in January. That house burned to ground. Across the street, the house burnt down. There's one house next to it, the one that's got the stuff. It used to be Wise Horn's house that has the tree trimming stuff. On this side, at the house where that house used to be at the bottom of my street, is Bryant Cement Company. If you ever sat on my porch when I'm up at this end of the street on a Sunday morning and hear them cleaning the inside of a cement truck, you ever heard that thing, rattling, 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 that noise? I'm all the way up here and I can hear it. Five o'clock in the morning on a Sunday morning, they're cleaning. I deal with it. I don't care. It's not in my yard. My yard is my thing. The deer come in. I have raccoons come in. I have groundhogs that live there. I have a fox that comes there. People's cats are in my yard. And it's peace and quiet back there. Other than the noise, I-95 is constant, day and night, day in, day out, every day. Across the street, nobody put a sign over there. Cold Kiss came. You know, I know everybody knows Cold Kiss Company. That's a big thing, you know? That's right across the street from my house. When I look out my door, that's what I see. 64 feet trucks. This guy's been good. He's going to put his opening on Georgetown Road. Right, as of now, it's on Parksia Avenue. But he's going to put it on there if I agree to this. He wants, but my thing is, there is a lovely fence. It's chain link fence all the way around his property. And it has shrubbery on it that the deer just adore. And that is, and I don't have to, I can't see in that yard. It used, they paved it. The guy before him paved it. And that guy was such a lass. He come down, had guys come into my yard and take my swing sets apart, my chairs that was there. I heard all this crackling noise. I come out and here's guys in my yard tearing my stuff. He said, well, and he's standing over here. Well, I thought you did me a favor. I thought you doing me a favor. I said, "What? Who asked you to?" I said, "I was, this is my," he said, "We can't find our land. We don't know where our land starts." I said, "That's your problem. The city came out here years ago, and I come home and hear they're standing. And I said, 'Can I help you two city people? We're trying to find, we lost 10 feet. It's supposed to be a paper alley here, next to my house, it's 10 feet.'"
So, Ms. Moran, your councilperson has asked, she wants to comment with your testimony.
That was rising her. She's my councilperson. And Ms. Felicia, and I talked to you, and she said about the guy, they changed our zoning. She got our zoning. We voted her in. She got our zoning changed.
She's got your message and she wants to comment. So, thank you for your testimony.
I'm saying, my testimony is that I need to stand here. My son couldn't come. He owns the house. He bought it when my husband died.
I've granted you more than two minutes. So, we got your message.
Sorry, I know, I watch you every day. I know it's two minutes. But I'm saying, if they was to leave, why should they put up money and put up a new fence? They want an eight-foot-tall fence when there's a lovely fence there that the deer just love. They eat the stuff off of it. I can't see in there. They can't see in my yard. My yard is free and clear and not bothering them. My son has a little circle there. He has that mess. I shouldn't say that because it's.
We appreciate your comments. Can Councilwoman Porter?
I'm trying.
Can you stop there now, please?
Go right ahead. I'm going to finish this. They want to put a 35-foot-tall building. They have a building on that property. If, all he wants it for is to store things, what's wrong with that? Why spend your money, put a 35-foot-tall building that I can't see around?
Thank you.
Taking my skyline. You're all worrying about skylines. I got one.
Ms. Moran, can we stop right there?
Yeah, I can. I can show you a whole bunch of stuff here.
Thank you so much. We get the message?
I'm saying no.
I got the message. Can we stop there? And Ms., and Councilwoman Porter is going to make, she would like, and I'm going to grant her to make a comment. Thank you.
Go ahead. You can talk.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And that's the reason why it took, that's the reason why it took so long for the community engagement process because I stopped a lot of what they were trying to do based on your comments that you were, that you shared. Just a few points. The 35-foot, 3,500-foot building.
That's what's on his paperwork.
Yeah, so.
Tall.
Yes. It is going to be tall. But again, you would still have the vision that you're discussing. Number two, the truck traffic was one of the things that I actually placed in to make sure that the truck traffic on Georgetown Road does not disrupt the residents that are over there now. So, that's why they're moving their facility to the other side, which is not in the residential area abutting your house. So, that was one of the stipulations for the support from the community association and also my office to ensure that that happens. If there are additional items that you want to bring up, we can definitely talk about that with the developers.
So, on that point, please set up a meeting with your councilperson and so you can finish settling. But your time, but your time is up, and I must move on.
The one more thing was that they want to take the bottom of my yard, and I say no.
Ms. Moran, I've given you extra time.
I know you did.
Your councilperson is going to set up a meeting with you. So, I must move on to the next person.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Do you understand what I mean about the yard?
Thank you.
I'm not talking to you.
Thank you.
I wasn't talking to you. I'm talking about my, my yard.
Is there a Patty Moran? Is there a Patty Moran? Is that you? Or do you have anything else to add? Please, excuse me. You're talking to the committee. Wait. Excuse me. All we're asking is for your testimony. Say who you are. You can say where you live and give your testimony to us. That's the process.
So, my testimony is that I'm just trying to clarify what my mom's last question was.
Sure.
She's saying 3,500 feet. But they were saying 35 feet high.
Yeah, no, it's not 3,500 feet high. No.
And also, is that really what it's going to be? Or is it going to be what they were also saying that if they didn't get their way, they were going to put houses on there?
So, that's a separate zoning perspective if they place houses there. But from my understanding, it's not, it's not going to be that. No, ma'am.
It's not going to be houses. It's going to be the warehouse.
Yes, ma'am.
And is it still under?
So, we'll stop right there. This is, you set up a meeting with your councilperson. If you just have straight testimony to give the committee, that's what you don't, please don't ask questions. That's where you can sit down with your councilperson, not back-and-forth dialogue with the person that's not a part of this committee. You have, do you have anything else to add to your testimony? Because, so we can move on. Evidently, you do not, and I'm going to move on to the next person. Thank you.
My apologies, Madam Chair. My apologies.
Oh, you're fine. Is there a Chase Hoffberger? Or is this, you respond, come on, come on down.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chase Hoffberger. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Kevin Wang. Thank you for taking our testimony today. Certainly, I hope that you all can understand sort of the breadth of confusion that's surrounded this rezoning project. We've provided you with some materials, a memorandum that we submitted to the Planning Department, Planning Commission, as well as a letter that we supplied directly to you that tries to outline some of the neighborhood engagement that we strive for during this lengthy process. The Moran's are longstanding neighbors. They clearly have a vested interest in the outcome of this matter. We have tried, over the course of multiple years, to have a substantive meeting with them. That has been requested or recommended by the Planning Commission, by Councilwoman Porter. We've made multiple phone calls to their homes. We've sent a first-class letter. We have offered to deed land to their, to them when there was a brief land dispute. Mr. Wang and his colleagues are not trying to do anything out of the ordinary. This land was zoned M-21 under the previous zoning code, and it's currently R-6, along with the two houses that the Moran's live in. The rezoning created what the Planning Department has called an island of residential homes in a commercial and industrial area. There are three lots that are residential in a broad swath of commercial and industrial properties. This is trying to right a mistake that occurred during the rezoning. As to the use of the land, it has been largely vacant for many years. There's currently a shipping container that's used sort of as a warehouse, or was used as a warehouse. Mr. Wang is trying to build a nicer one that, to be clear, will be within the confines of the zoning code. 35 feet is what's allowed in the I-1 zone. But we have spoken, you know, there was sort of a mention of, one more point. There was a mention of houses.
And wrap up.
Yeah, there was a mention of houses. During conversation at one point, we said, you know, if we didn't get a rezoning, the only other option would be to build houses. This is how many houses you can build by right under the zoning code. So, we, we're not threatening housing or anything. But anyway, that's my piece. Thank you very much, and I'm here to answer any questions.
And just to confirm, and again, it's 35 feet, not 3,500 feet. And so, that was a clarification that, for your vision perspective.
Thanks. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak on this bill issue? Okay, we're checking now to see if there's anyone online for this bill. And there is no one online. Is there a motion to recommend this bill favorable? So moved by Councilwoman Ramos. Second by Councilman Glover. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway is absent, excuse absence. Dorsey is absent. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Stokes? Is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Thank you. Okay, we're back on again. Next, the committee will hear Bill LO-24-0058, Department of Housing and Community Development Fixed Pricing Policy. This bill was introduced on February 26th, 2024. And this bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Ramos. We're first going to get comments from Council President Mosby, and then following, Council President Mosby, we will hear from Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, obviously, housing has historically been part of major concerns, particularly as it relates to, you know, failed policies and policies that have created unintended consequences for our communities here in the city of Baltimore, like many others. But Baltimore City seems to kind of be the poster child for many of the issues. You know, I commend Councilwoman Ramos for bringing this to the council, you know. But I want to really urge and kind of communicate the process that we're not here to vote on anything, nor does the council have the statutory kind of authorization to vote on this initiative by the Mayor's Office. This is something that's going to come in front of the Board of Estimates, potentially tomorrow, if not deferred. Originally, I deferred this with some questions, and I would like to thank the administration, Commissioner Kennedy, as well as other folks from the mayor's staff for sitting down and kind of talking about the policy. The one thing I'm going to say before we turn it over to Councilwoman Odette, it's just, you know, this council, through my leadership, has had a huge push to prioritize affordable homeownership and ensure that we provide folks who are living in communities that have been disproportionately divested in for decades, we provide them the decency and sanctity to stay in their communities. So, with that, you know, one of the huge pieces and concerns that I've expressed to the administration time and time again is, you know, there should be a prioritization to residents who want access to affordable homeownership in the communities that they've dealt through the crime, grime, and blight as they continue to move forward. But also, more importantly, for the residents that we utilize programs like this to stabilize blocks and to stabilize communities, they should have the ability of staying in those communities. I say that just to get into weeds, but I say that because a lot of times, we create programs like this, and from a market rate perspective, the rental unit is an affordable unit today. But if we do not put the guardrails in, the constraints in, to ensure that the nonprofit or that the private developer who has been able to get this property through programs like this, that there's no measure to ensure that that individual can stay in those communities, we will literally be building back and stabilizing communities off the backs of folks that will no longer be able to live in those communities once the values continue to increase. So, the only thing that we're asking is, the only thing that I'm concerned about, again, is the prioritization associated with affordable homeownership. But then also ensuring that residents who we're stabilizing the communities off of have the ability to kind of stay in those communities. We've seen this happen all throughout our country. Baltimore is kind of that next wave, and it's critically important that we be very intentional to ensure that we do not repeat some things from the past. The last thing, you know, I'll say regarding specifically the rental market and maybe specific concerns about kind of how we want mixed-income communities, we're only talking about, at this point, maybe 10% of the vacant properties. So, if a private developer, or if a private organization, if a nonprofit wants to go out in the regular market and really go after vacancies, they still have the ability to do so, and it doesn't restrict it just to affordable homeownership or this affordable approach that I'm talking about with the residents that we will utilize to stabilize these communities. With that, thank you again to Councilwoman Ramos for bringing this in front of the council, and I look forward to a good hearing.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. President. And thanks to everybody here. I think this is important for a couple of reasons. One is that we've all been working together for many years, but in particular, in the last three years, to take addressing vacant and abandoned properties, rehabbing those properties, and really taking this to scale because we know how much of a crisis this is. So, I'm not going to go through all the stats of why we think it's a crisis, we know. I first want to acknowledge that I think it's important that the DHCD is working hard to hire the right, get the right capacity to be able to put more cases through INREM because that way, we can acquire the many vacant properties that are still privately owned, which, by the way, is most of them. The city only owns a little less than 1,000 vacant and abandoned properties. So, the INREM tool and the expansion of INREM is going to be extremely important as we move forward. But as we move forward and get more properties through INREM, we will have the opportunity to, and we should have the opportunity, to be strategic about our disposition approach. The beauty of INREM is that you do not have to auction off the property to the highest bidder. And so, we can actually be very strategic about what the outcome should be in a neighborhood, who benefits, and making sure that we're doing this in a way that looks at preserving homeownership for our elders. But if we look at all of the stats about what the housing crisis is in Baltimore City, we should be able to solve it by adding more units to the inventory and being strategic about affordability. So, I will just go through a couple of things that, or many, actually, things that have come about relative to this policy. So, the policy is deemed a fixed-price policy. So, the fixed-price nature of this is great. We've actually talked about it. Commissioner, and the team have talked about it a lot. What currently occurs when there is a sale of vacant and abandoned properties is that there's an appraisal, there's a negotiation. It takes months. That's insane, right? Let's just cut all of that out and create a fixed price where certain properties are certain prices, depending on who the buyer is. Makes total sense. That is good. And that can be something we can be proud of, move forward. The questions that I have about the rest of the policy are important to highlight because it really changes how disposition is being done and making sure that we're doing this in a strategic way. So, my biggest concern about the rest of the policy is that it's very clear that it is a first-come, first-served situation. So, what happens with first-come, first-served, it's not whole block, as we've been talking about, where particularly in the deal with, or in the initiative by the mayor and Build and GBC, they're concentrating on the money to come to the city, super important. I'm a big fan of that. But also that we've been working on a whole-block solution. So, really taking this to scale. So, if we're doing a first-come, first-served situation, that can't happen because we're actually getting properties out the door to whomever can hit refresh fastest on the website to be able to put their application in. So, that is the biggest concern. And what that also does is that it doesn't allow us for intentionality and scale. We want, part of the deal is to have the noncontiguous TIFs, for instance, for affordable homeownership. And if we're selling properties first-come, first-served, you know, how are we going to make sure which properties we know we're going to use that TIF for? Or any other financing for affordability. There's also concerns about equity. In terms of a first-come, first-served policy, again, who's going to be sitting on the website hitting refresh until the new policy, new properties come up, and then they can apply for those properties? And that's not going to be your nonprofits that have a lot of work to do. That may not be your CLTs. That's not going to be your individuals that are working hard. It's going to be the companies that have a lot of people or one person that they designate to be able to get the property first. And I don't think that that is fair, nor is it equitable because we know what is going to happen there. The other piece of this that I have some questions on is, we use, the city typically uses a land disposition agreement. A land disposition agreement is done when the properties are sold from the city to a private entity to be able to rehab the property. And there are conditions that are set in that LDA that say you have to rehab the property in a certain amount of time, et cetera, et cetera. There's also a clause in the LDA that says, if you don't do the work, we have the right, as a city, to take it back. Research done in my office shows that there are 420 currently vacant and abandoned properties that were sold by the city since the 1990s that are still vacant and do not have, and have, some of them have been sold a couple of times. So where is the enforcement of the LDA? Because if we're doing first-come, first-served, and we're not, we don't have that backend enforcement, I fear that we're going to be right back where we started with more than 420 of these properties that are going to be vacant without that enforcement. And the council president and I both have already talked about affordability and being intentional. There's a section of the plan that talks about criteria. And it's important to have criteria because you want to make sure that anybody who's purchasing the property has a set of, you know, has a track record of success, has the cash that's needed, et cetera. And so I would suggest that we, in addition to what it says there, where you cannot have VBNs older than, vacant building notices on any properties that you own for two years, to really look at what is that track record of success as well. The background check, I think we talked about this, that it sounds a lot like we're doing a criminal background check, and certainly we want to make sure that nobody has, any buyers are fraudulent or anything like that. But we also know that there are people who are coming back from being incarcerated that may have a skill set that they want to utilize by buying properties and being able to rehab them. And if they have their criminal background, that might hinder them from buying the property. So I think we just have to be careful about how we move forward in that. And I don't think that this should be called a background check. It should just be like a criteria review or something like that. And then, of course, there's the issue of the funds available. Currently, the policy is that if you're going to buy a city-owned property, you have to have $90,000 cash or available at any time to be able to start to rehab the property immediately. You know, so I think that that's an issue where, you know, corporations, LLCs, you know, probably should have more cash. And individuals, you know, may be less, but we certainly need to help them. And then this issue of residents as purchasers. Residents as purchasers is important. We want to be able to have additional opportunities for residents in a strategic way. $90,000 may be out of reach. And so making sure that if we're going to do this work of selling the properties for a dollar or whatever price we decide on, that there is additional aid and investment to make sure that that property gets rehabbed. That is really, really critical. We want to, if we're going to be prioritizing residents, that that is extremely important. I have a couple more, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. 12 properties at a time is the limit in this new, in this new policy, that somebody can buy 12 properties at a time, and you have to rehab them all before you can get 12 new properties. That's not terrible in itself, but if you wanted to have economies of scale and a whole-block strategy, you want to be able to maybe do a couple at a time. That money is then used to be able to either purchase some more or to go in and purchase the rest and, or to rehab the rest. And so it's important to look at, maybe do what One House at a Time does, which is, you know, if you accomplish a few, then maybe you get, so if you have 12 total, you get two done, then you get two more, so you have 12 total to make that, that impact. Again, this is a lot of stuff that I had collected from a lot of different people, but also from things that I have observed over time. LLC transparency is really important. Whoever signs that LDA is going to have to have the actual owner's name and not just the LLC. We also don't know whether it's 12 properties per LLC or 12 properties per person because we have single-member LLCs in Baltimore City, or, excuse me, in Maryland. And it could be one guy owning 30 properties, but it's, and it's, you know, a lot of different LLCs. So that's another question as well. And then you'll hear some testimony, hopefully she'll be able to come on, regarding the side lot policy. The side lot policy is extremely important for anybody who's a homeowner who wants to buy the lot next to them. But there has been a policy that's been used from the Office of Sustainability for over 17 years that the Conservation Trust folks have been working with to, to acquire lots and wanted to make sure that that still stays in place. So, and then there's some minor points, there's some grammatical things, there's some, you know, rearranging. So I look forward to the discussion around these points and anything else that my colleagues have thought through as they have read through the policy. I look forward to hearing from DHCD about their bigger-picture approach on how this is going to work. And again, I just want to urge the administration to pull this from the agenda tomorrow until we are able to have much more of a discussion about this and make sure that some of these questions are answered or changed in order to, to get this right. And again, I'm not here to stymie progress. What I'm trying to do is work with everybody to try to make sure that we're doing this right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. And before we hear from, and get further information and discussion from the mayor's office and his staff, I, first of all, on behalf of this committee and the council, I want to thank President Mosby for, for flagging this as the total council is, you know, we're very concerned and just really want to work hard in trying to help solve the housing crisis in our prospective districts and throughout the city. And so thank you, President Mosby, for flagging this and bringing this to the forefront for discussion. And thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for being our council, I'd say guru, for kind of helping with housing issues, particularly because of your extensive background in the subject is very important as we move forward. One thing that you had mentioned that really kind of still sticks in my mind is the, since 1990, some of these houses are still vacant. So it just shows how, you know, this subject is very important, and it's about all of us, you know, working together and just helping us to understand. So it's, it's really not a debate, it's a discussion. And so after we hear from the administration and his folks, I know I have some committee members that also had some questions about the subject, and you might possibly answer those questions in your presentation. But we're going to start with J.D. Merrill, which is the Deputy Chief of Staff in the mayor's office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Council President Mosby, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Glover. Thank you all for having us here today. Again, I am J.D. Merrill, Mayor Scott's Deputy Chief of Staff here on behalf of the administration. Mayor Scott, he's currently down in Annapolis. He's testifying today in support of Delegate Smith's bill to extend Project Core, which is a crucial part of our, the mayor's $3 billion plan to address vacant properties in Baltimore that he announced along with our partners from Build &amp; GBC back in December. Under the leadership of Mayor Scott, the administration has been working urgently to address Baltimore's vacant and abandoned property crisis. And I want to remind everyone of how personal this issue is to the mayor. Mayor Scott grew up in Park Heights in the 1980s, at a time when Baltimore and his neighborhood were losing population. He walked by vacant and abandoned properties every day on his way home from school. That kid from Park Heights is now our mayor. And he's directed Commissioner Kennedy, DHCD, our entire administration, to use an all-hands-on-deck approach to address vacant properties. And the results speak for themselves. Since the mayor took office on December 8, 2020, the number of vacant properties in our city has decreased by nearly 15%. The city now owns fewer than 1,000 of these properties. Some, but not all of those properties are listed on the Buy Into Baltimore website. If you haven't been to it, it's buyintobemore.baltimorecity.gov. And it's a really fun website to play around with if you haven't. Here's how it currently works. You go to the website, you select a property, you put it in your cart like you're online shopping. You fill out a quick form, and you hit submit. You immediately receive an automated email letting you know that your inquiry has been received and has been forwarded to a neighborhood development officer. A few days later, the neighborhood development officer emails you to let you know that you should reach out to planning to confirm what you can use the property for, and then the process is explained for how to acquire the property. You put in a bid, which is your best offer of what you think the property is worth, usually whatever the assessed value of it is. DHCD then takes your bid and makes the property available for other bids for two weeks. DHCD then closes the bidding process and looks at all the offers and makes an award. The process of disposition takes about four months from start to finish. The process is pretty cool, but it's not quick and it's not transparent. The fixed pricing policy will bring speed and transparency to this one method of disposition. And that's important to note for this conversation that we're having here today. This is just one method of disposition. DHCD still sells properties via multiple avenues and processes beyond Buy Into Baltimore, including unsolicited bids and proposals, bundle sales, RFPs and RFQs, negotiated sales, property swaps, side yard disposition, and expressions of interest. Together, all of these tools help us achieve whole-block outcomes. And we need each of these tools working together as quickly as possible to eliminate vacant properties at scale. While DHCD offers smaller groupings of properties to developers for redevelopment, which are mid-range offerings designed specifically for whole-block outcomes, and larger RFPs for larger sites or bigger offerings, we want everyone to benefit from Baltimore's renaissance. And Buy Into Baltimore and fixed pricing help us do that. By being able to distribute properties one at a time or up to 12 at a time, we have a disposition option that works for everyone: teachers, nurses, firefighters, police officers, nonprofits, community-based developers, not just our big developers, who want to be a part of building a home and rebuilding Baltimore along the way. The sale of single properties can and will help us get to scale, and having this as one of our tools will help us get there. Again, we don't want a one-size-fits-all approach to achieving whole-block outcomes. We need all of the tools in the tool belt and for each tool to move as quickly as possible. This tool already exists, and we're going to make it faster, more transparent, and more equitable by adopting a fixed price to each property. Thank you for the conversation today.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Department of Housing and Community Development, Commissioner Alice Kennedy.
Good afternoon, everyone. Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner. I'm here with Deputy Commissioner Kate Edwards, as well as our Chief of Policy and Research, Kimberly Rubens. Jason has left. Okay, Jason has left the building, so we are no longer with Jason. Wanted to thank you for the hearing today. This is a topic that we have discussed, you know, multiple times and first started talking about fixed pricing now over two years ago in, in meetings with the councilmen and others about that would be, about, you know, the benefit of setting that transparent and fixed price. We've also talked in some of those meetings back about two years ago, almost three years ago now, also on the changes that were made at that point to what now we are calling a vetting process. We understood the kind of connotation around background check, but that has been changed to vetting process. And because those updates were made to the vetting process back in that timeframe as well and had those discussions around kind of the threshold of the $90,000 and other components of that and how we were addressing and starting to address and make changes specifically on some of the other items that you've brought forth. So I do want to kind of highlight and go through some of the components associated with the concerns that you laid out in the memo and some of the questions and concerns that we've had in the conversations with the council president. You know, the first is, is that the action that the board is being requested of tomorrow is to approve the pricing, so the actual price itself, and then a standing agenda item. That is the request, and that is what legally is the request of the board itself and what they will be voting on. It is the price and the standing agenda item. The concerns and questions that were brought up today, you know, in, in the memo and some of these other ones are associated with the existing kind of policies that are internal with DHCD that we've been utilizing and have been changing over the years, everything from Vacants to Value to when the Buy Into Bmore site was launched, when we switched to the new platform and changed it to Buy Into Bmore. Not every property that the city sells is available on Buy Into Bmore. Currently, right now, there's 226 buildings available on Buy Into Bmore and around 1,000 lots that are available on the Buy Into Bmore site. We do have a number of properties, of actual buildings and properties that are already in a process. The application came in, and they're in that kind of application review to vetting process review, to the, you know, the land disposition agreement, to then going to the Board of Estimates. One item also is that we do not sell and consider a property sold until it actually goes to settlement. So there's a Board of Estimates process that happens before it goes to settlement, and that is when the property is actually sold. In that process, we do already, and this will continue, which is, there isn't anything new or changed about it, which is, in that process, if someone has put in a bid or what used to be called a bid, because as Deputy Chief of Staff stated, there used to be an actual bidding process. But let's say someone does put in an application for 12 properties, then during that time, the, the LDA will clearly state, well, what is the settlement timeline for those 12 properties? Are we settling three now and then waiting? And, you know, you anticipate that in six months, you're going to be able to settle on the next three, and six months after that, settle on the next three, and six months after that, settle on the next three. So that exists within the process now, and it will continue to exist with the fixed pricing component. What the fixed pricing does in the transparent way in terms of, everybody now knows what to expect. So when you're trying to plan for your acquisition costs, when you're trying to put together your financing package, when you're trying to look at this of the properties that are available on the Buy Into Bmore site, you are able to know, okay, I am going to have to pay X, which will make me be able to, as I'm even submitting my application, know how much that acquisition is because that goes into total development costs and what you're looking at when you're putting together your capital stack and how much funds are available. So the piece that happens is that now it's, you know, somewhat of a rolling basis because there is, you know, not that two-week time period of a bidding component where someone is coming in to bid against you to try to get a higher bid on a price, on a, on a property. So that is where it just is now, that rolling component. I want to touch also on the fact that not every property is included in this. So we are actively working with our communities, and we are working towards whole-block solutions. The policy applies to the properties that are listed on Buy Into Bmore, and that does not change the way we will continue to work with and how we have been working with our communities in the creation of the neighborhood-specific housing strategies or the block-level planning that includes the planned acquisition and disposition strategies. An example is, you know, I have multiple examples from a number of our impact investment areas where we're actively doing this work. An example in Culture and Homes on Malabello, the properties down on Garrett that have been, been, being acquired through InREM. We've had that conversation with the community. What, you know, how do you envision those? Do you envision those as we get them? Do you want us to hold them? Do we want one developer? You know, what is the community looking at? What do we think might work? What, you know, the council person has had conversations of that. Is it going to be five people? Is it going to be one person? Is it going to be one person? How is that going to play out? Those properties, as they're going through the INREM stage, are flagged, that they are part of the Garrett Avenue component, so they don't go onto the Buy Into B More website. You have to manually choose to put a property on the website as available for purchase. Another example is that we have been working with Park Heights Renaissance and Director Jiggetz about, you know, the work in there, and what is going to be kind of assembled? Where are we assembling? What is INREM? What are we acquiring through condemnation? Because we, it's INREM, we have all of our acquisition methods that we're using. And what are we acquiring? And then what is the envision for the community? We've had everything from a couple of properties going to one entity that is getting, you know, their ground floor, and how is that going to work? We also have been talking about larger, as we acquire, having those larger RFPs, that it's 50 properties, and we have determined with the community that we want these 50 properties to have an affordable component to them, whether or not it be long-term rental or homeownership. And then as that RFP goes out, then there's also funding available with that RFP to achieve the goals that the community wants to see. Also with Park Heights Renaissance, there's a smaller, we just went through this and put out a small number of properties in the Park Circle area, kind of called like a bundle, because it's smaller, and working with them on those. As we identify, and those are ones that have been in the city's inventory that never went on the Buy Into B More website, because we always knew, we always knew that there was a plan with the community on what the disposition of those would be. So all of those different types of components, the block-level planning work that we do with communities, and that happens not just with our impact investment areas, it happens with what we now call our community asset-building neighborhoods, it happens with our local housing partners, nonprofits, CDCs, et cetera, where we meet with them regularly, talk about what they're looking to acquire, how are we assisting in that acquisition, and then what is going into that pipeline to be held that will never make it onto the Buy Into B More website for that. We do make decisions with community as well, in terms of what is going to be offered on the Buy Into B More website, and what you can submit an application for, for those properties. So those decisions are happening now, they have been happening, they will continue to happen, as we look at this from achieving our whole block strategies and intentionality and scale. Like we said, the fixed pricing is only one of the many types of dispositions and processes that we do employ, that we already employ and will employ. We'll continue to craft those RFPs in partnership with the community, the RFQs, the lots that are put out for new construction and infill. Deputy Edwards and the team have actually reversed a lot of that process, so that a very good example are, you know, the lots that we put out with very specific components in the Upton community, that it's part of achieving the whole block. We have the Harlem amendments in on the 800 blocks, we've been working on the vacant properties, now we have the vacant lots, there is a desire for infill new construction, and the RFP went out specifically those for new construction and infill. Those lots were never put onto the Buy Into B More website as available for purchase or sale, because they are part of the community planning process that exists and how that is going forward.
Not to cut you off, but since you're in that subject, could you kind of explain your process with communities? Because we have so many different kinds of communities and different funding sources. And can you kind of give a, just a process?
Yeah, so I think each of the communities that we work in is different. So some of the communities in the impact investment areas, we meet with monthly as part of the monthly work group meetings, a number of the council members attend those monthly work group meetings. We also have, in the impact investment areas, additional meetings on top of the work group meetings, or the, they're the sub-sub-sub work group meetings, where additional block-level planning and decisions are being made about what will be acquired and put forth. An example of that is in the Coldstream Homes at Malamelo, not during one of the work group meetings, but in another meeting that was scheduled for an hour, we stayed for three, three and a half hours, three hours. It was, it ended up, it was just me at the end, the staff disseminated.
And how do you select those properties?
Yeah, and those were selected with the community. So it was the community association, in that meeting, I was the community association president, two other representatives of the community, like residents of the community and community partners in that meeting, having the discussion about very specific blocks of the 1,600 block of Gorsuch, Carswell, and Abbottston, and what would be acquired for either renovation, which would come in, and what we would be acquiring to then put out as a bundle or as an RFP, what would be acquired for infill new construction, what would be acquired for green space, what would be acquired for eventually potentially demolition and cleared space for future redevelopment. So that is an example of impact investment areas, where it's more intense, it's happening regularly, and then we move to the community areas of focus, we typically, or asset building, we meet with them quarterly, doing the same process.
And there's some communities that are not as sophisticated as certain, so
There are, and I think
That's where the inequities come into play, as the councilwoman
And we agree with that, and that's one reason why we have included in the mayor's plan the necessary need for additional technical assistance money, and how to connect some of those, you know, strengthen those communities in terms of what they want to see. We've talked about this also with Councilman Bullock and some of his communities that haven't been as organized around some of the work around making the decisions and doing the block-level planning. And we do want to and do recognize that we need to increase that capacity and that technical part. So in terms of intentionality and scale, you know, we will continue, you know, to strengthen that. Like I said, we've moved to, even on the large RFPs and other components, to do that planning work on the front end, so that any offerings are very clear, that this is what it is. This is a vacant lot that specifically the community is looking for mixed-use, you know, mixed-use multifamily affordable development, or they're looking for, you know, mixed-use market rate development.
President Moosby, since she's on that subject, you said you had a question?
It's not a question, it's more of a statement to the committee as well as the administration. Definitely interested in the full equation, I think that's really important. But I think the level of urgency and like what we're talking about today is specific to the fixed pricing initiative, policy, and strategy, right?
This is.
No, we talked about a lot. We talked about the RFP, we talked about infield, we talked about INREM. I guess the point that I want to really drill home, so folks understand and know what the Board of Estimates, which is a five-member board, three of the members are from the administration, so automatically, you know, it kind of gets approved, is that we specifically talk about the fixed pricing structure, any initiatives that are directly tied into that, and kind of the operations of how we see that kind of fit into the strategy. I think that's important, not just for the administration, but also for the council, because the reality is, folks that are paying attention to this and watching and care about this, whether they're neighborhood associations, or nonprofits, or individual folks that, you know, want to purchase homes, the idea of us talking today is about fixed pricing. I'm not sure if that kind of makes sense, I don't want to, if the council, if the committee, I don't want to affect the committee. If you guys go off the cartwheels and want to talk about other things, that's fine, but I just want to kind of lay out the level of urgency of what we're talking about today, and that should be germane to what fixed pricing is, what fixed pricing will do, once we vote tomorrow, if we vote tomorrow, what changes from today to tomorrow, like that's what we should be focused on.
Point well taken.
And
Continue.
My, I was going through responding to, you know, concerns and questions from the councilwoman. What changes tomorrow is the price of the property on Buy Into B More, and there will be a standing board, a standing board agenda item that allows us and creates a more efficient pathway for us to move these properties to the Board of Estimates. That is, those are the two components that the Board of Estimates is approving. The other, like, side change to that is that there is no longer the two-week time period. Because there is a fixed price, there is no longer the two-week time period where a person can enter into a bid. Those are the changes that are occurring by the approval of the Board of Estimates tomorrow.
I have a question about that, Madam Chair, if I may. So, but the document that's before the board is much more than just the pricing, it's much more than that. So that's why I don't, I don't, I don't think it's clear to the public, certainly, certainly not to me, because what it sounds like to me is that the whole, the whole document is being
Yeah.
Approved. And so that's where all of these other questions are coming from, because we're seeing the entire document. And then there's the specifics around how exactly this is going to work, what the Deputy Chief of Staff was saying was that this is an opportunity for teachers and for all that, but not if they can't hit refresh on the website every day, trying to see what properties there are. So we need an answer to those kinds of things as well.
So I can talk a little bit, we talked, one of the items that we did talk about with the council president is how we want to support the individual members of the community being able to purchase properties from Buy Into B More. So one of the things the team is actually working on, and I was hoping to have something to show today, because we've been working since our last conversation on it, we will be putting out and holding these 226 properties that are available now. We will be holding those, we've agreed with the council president to hold those for 90 days. We are going to be and have a push out to, you know, get to the people that want to purchase a property, whether or not it's, they're attached to it from a family member, they want to buy their great-great aunt's house, they live in a community and want to purchase it. We also have it clearly understanding, and we made sure that, because we checked it with the law department, that it can be for Baltimore residents that want to purchase to live in as their primary residence. Then, so you're just like, well, what happens after the 90 days? So after the 90 days, we also are going to be, and the team is working on it, to have like a portal available where, and we will continue to push this out through all of our community partners, all of the council members, everybody that we can talk to. If you are living by or see a vacant property, and it's, it is one that your family lost due to redlining, or it's one that they lost to tax sale, or if it's one that, for a number of different reasons, maybe your family, your family home is now sitting with a vacant building notice on it, and you would like to purchase that and live in it as your primary residence. We are going to have a form that you can fill out that's applicable to any property that's not just city-owned, that is and has a vacant building notice on it, so that we know what someone is interested in, and then we can talk to them about our ability to do acquisition on that property. So is that property INREM-eligible? Can we acquire that property through INREM? Can we then push that through? And then what that does is, because of the timing of INREM, which is, you know, by the time you have the title work process and the court process, you'll have about a nine-month time period where our staff on the homeownership and housing preservation side will be connecting with that person to see how ready are they to purchase a property? Are they, like, they want to purchase this vacant property, are they ready to purchase this vacant property? Sometimes people are. They have the financing, they have the income, they can get the loan, sometimes they're not. They can't, they don't have the ability, they can't get the loan, they don't have the 90,000. So we're going to be connecting those residents with the homeownership counseling, the homeownership coaching, finding out where they are, and helping them get to the point, so that when we end up, as the city, acquiring that property, we would have a way to be able to move forward with them to actually do the property and potentially connect them with someone else. Because they might be overwhelmed by, they might not want to get a rehab loan or a 2K or 3K loan and do it themselves, they want to connect with someone else that might work with them to do it together, you know, work with one of the partners on it, but to get that homeownership outcome. So there's two pieces. One, there's the first kind of 90-day hold on the 226 properties that are currently available on Buy Into B More, and then there will be an ongoing, this is something that we want to push out wide and far, in terms of having people be able to submit interest into properties for homeownership outcomes. And that would be too, partnering with our community residents, so that when we are stating that, you know, they're, and doing block-level planning, well, Mrs. Jones submitted a form that says that this is her family home, and she wants to purchase it. So we have that conversation as well, as part of that, so that everybody's on the same page as to where that's going. And that is something that came up with the council president, and, you know, we've put a little bit more thought into how to make that happen, and how to make that work, and moving forward on that. A couple of other, I don't know if the councilman had a question or wants to address now about the LDA?
Councilman Stokes has been waiting very patiently, and he sent me another message.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I am here.
He'd like to ask a question.
I just want to read something here. It says, "The gentrification of Baltimore began in 2000 and continued to transform by the city developments, specific neighborhoods, specific neighborhoods, let's say that." And at the bottom it says, "However, many others feel that gentrification is unfavorable for Baltimore, it displaces current residents from their homes due to rising prices in newly gentrified neighborhoods." And I can tell you one, EDBI, I can tell you another one. Greater, I mean, New, Green Mount West, that was majority black, poor neighborhoods. Now, my question is, and I think the fixed policy is good, my question is, and I've been saying this before, I keep hearing the word equity, I don't see it, I hear the word. I asked about LDA, land disposition agreement, how did it now affect Midway CDC, Broadway East CDC, Park Heights CDC? So what happens to LDA? You still have persons, developers in this city that has, that have LDA and haven't done absolutely nothing with the land they have. So what happens to those smaller developers in this city? I'm still asking about LDA, I'm telling you, we have a hearing about housing, I'm asking for LDA. They give it to everybody else. Now you got a new policy called fixed pricing policy. Where is the equity in this city for smaller black developers who've been waiting to develop some property in this city, and we come up with this again? I'm still asking about the LDA. Where's the LDA at? I don't see no benefit here for the people that already live in this city. There's nothing in this, in this policy says, I don't spell the word gentrification, but it's in here, it's in here. We know what happened in DC, it's right now happening in Baltimore. We got enough developers that can develop and can vet their own developers and do it themselves. This right here, I don't see none of this happening. This is to be another, that's why I write gentrification, it's to be another way of gentrifying these neighborhoods, and it's already happening. So where is the LDA for people that want, developers that want the LDA? And again, the people, the developers from out of town. Got a whole bunch of property LDA, and it's still vacant, and you're telling a resident that they got 90 days, they got a whole year before they can fix the property up, and if they don't fix it, you take it back. But you got developers that had property for four or five years, and they still have the property. So I'm trying to understand, what good is this for people that already want to develop in this city, small black developers in this city? Where's the benefit for them in this policy? I think the fixed policy is nice, but I don't see nothing but some more gentrification in this city. So to you, Commissioner, thank you, but I want to know where the LDA at? There should be a LDA, I've been asked for LDA every time we have a hearing. Now we got a new policy. What happened to Park Heights CDC? What happened to Broadway East CDC? What happened to Midway CDC? I can show you where it is. Go over to Dolly Park and look at that mess. Go to Broadway East and look at that mess. Go to Green Mount and Midway and look at that mess. Go to South Clifton Park, go to Dolly Park. Now we're going to say, we're going to do this policy again, and I don't see the benefits to them.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes, your questioning and point is right on target, but before you answer, Councilman Bullock, your questioning, I think you want to comment right now.
Yes, and it's related to some of the points that were made. So Commissioner Kennedy and team, thank you for being here. I know one of the things that came out in some of the communications leading up to this point has been a this point has been around distressed markets, and you've talked about some of the challenges we've had, particularly in the Ninth District. Just so everyone knows, the Ninth District has the lion's share of the vacant properties in the city in terms of its concentration. So, really feels very acutely. And there was a lot of discussion around the, the fact that some of these properties have been sold, not developed, and that does speak to the distressed level of the market. Can you talk about some of those challenges and how this addresses that concern that some of the concerns are also raised?
Commissioner, or any one that you have that can help answer, I guess, both of these questions.
Yep. So, I'd, I'd say a couple of things. One, I'm, myself personally, as well as the administration and others, have and are very supportive of the small women and minority-owned development firms and being able to provide them an opportunity. So, I'm addressing back to Councilman Stokes on a number of the different components. Last week, I was just actually with a group of 20 minority women developers going through a cohort together that are working on wanting to look at different types of properties and, and doing this work and, and connecting with the communities and so forth. We have had conversations with communities such as Broadway East to talk about, you know, how they want to function and, and looking at that RFQ that we're going to be putting out to get the qualifications for developers, so that there are, as the properties are being acquired and being looked at in terms of those decisions for the large parcels or the individual properties that those developers would be there and would be available. The LDA is the land disposition agreement, which does come in at the time, you know, and is, comes in at the settlement piece. So, that is not in, and that is not what is being approved by the Board of Estimates. The Board of Estimates does not approve the land disposition agreement in terms of, they approve the land disposition agreement, but the LDA comes in during that piece after the application has been received and reviewed, then the land disposition is executed at that point. In terms of looking, this is and has, this applies to the properties in E through J. There are, and what we've also seen is that a number of people that have purchased properties through Buy It To Be More previous to that vacancy value, that they are actively performing that renovation of the property, whether or not it's for a homeownership outcome or a rental outcome. They typically are doing that without any incentives. They might apply to one of the incentive programs that we have available, but a lot of times, they're using their own private capital to make that work and to be able to cover the different components of, 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 of that, of that piece. I think both, the council, both councilmen, I think, touched on the compliance piece, and I know that that was something that the councilman also touched on, so I do want to make sure that we get there. While the reverter provision hasn't been used widely, it has been successfully used in the past. Is it something that happens on a regular basis? No. But we have, even since 2018, there's been about three LDAs where we have completed and done the reverter. There's actually a number of other ones that are being, being considered right now for that. We have made changes and strides to the compliance component since we first kind of started talking back two years, three years now. One of the biggest has been the implementation of our new, of our new software platform, which actually is automatically connected so that we now know when the permits are being pulled, and that's being tracked. We've been sending out the compliance letters to everyone on a regular basis in terms of compliance to make sure that they're meeting with the LDA. We've been actually getting a number of people that had been slow-walking, that are pulling their permits, they're doing the work, they're doing so forth. So, we've increased our capacity, both from a technology standpoint, process standpoint, and so forth, on the compliance piece of the LDA, which applies not just to these properties that are being sold on to Buy It To Be More, but that applies to all of the properties that we would sell even under the future types of disposition, any type of disposition method. One other last thing that came up is around the LLCs. We were supportive and have been supportive. We mentioned this in working with MAKO of the bill that, and we actually, Stephanie Murdock on our team was testifying on that bill two weeks ago, which will help ensure that we collect information for LLCs as part of the contract period. We know the name of the, the actual human, not a LLC company. We have a human, we have contact information, we know how to track them down. But on a broader scale, in terms of all of the work that we're doing, we've supported the state bill on making sure that there's a disclosure process so that we can find out members of LLCs as part of the compliance.
And could I add one thing in response to Councilman Stokes' concerns? You know, if, if we look back 15 years from now, and we've gentrified our neighborhoods, and we've priced residents out, then we have failed in what we're seeking to do here. And so, I just want to be very clear about that, that that's the administration's position. What we're trying to do here is uphold our core values in development, one of which is redevelopment without displacement. We don't want to redevelop Baltimore the DC way or the Philadelphia way. We want to do it the Baltimore way. We want to chart a new way of doing things that addresses historical injustices, that grows our population and does so by building equitable neighborhoods and doing so without displacement and without gentrification. So, just want to state that for the record.
I appreciate the discussion, and obviously, I've been a broken record since the day I've taken over as a City Council President regarding the prioritization. And, and we can say that, and we can talk about that all day, you know, particularly as it relates to the word that we use all the time in City Hall called equity. I guess the, the question is, and this is where I want to continue to steer the council, and I would like the administration to stay focused on, is the Board of Estimates tomorrow on the agenda is voting on something, and I don't see any of the, the policy pieces or the updates where we're being extremely intentional to ensure we're not regurgitating the wheels that we've seen in other urban areas with some of the systemic challenges and disproportionate amount of divestment in certain communities. So, the question is, maybe I missed it in the, the wording in the document, where do we talk about that? What are the safeguards that we have in place for this particular program? And if there aren't in the document, if I have not missed it, why wouldn't we just put that in this document that we're voting on?
So, in the, what you are voting on at the Board of Estimates, and by legally, and we've checked this, is that the criteria and so forth is not being voted on by the Board of Estimates. The Board of Estimates is voting on and approving the price structure, so the $1, the $1,000, the 3,000, and they're voting on to approve the, and they're voting on to approve the standing board agenda item. That is what is the board vote tomorrow, are those items?
And at a 30,000-foot level, definitely understand what, what you're communicating. I guess the concern is, just like any other decision that any of us make, there's data, there's documentation, there's a level of analysis that's provided that really outlines kind of the intention at that particular time. The reality is, in 15 years, people aren't going to talk about the intention of one person, one administration, or one organization. What people are going to talk about is the words, right? The data, what's presented. And when I read the supporting documentation associated with the two things that you, you said that we're voting on, it does not specifically lay out to my liking and my concern, which I've provided to the administration over and over again, the intentionality, intentionality of what the Deputy Chief of Staff just talked about. So, the question to the administration is, why wouldn't we do that? Particularly knowing Baltimore City's history around real estate, and, and particularly knowing that we've seen programs, maybe like this, maybe other programs, around other jurisdictions that were like Baltimore City at its time, that did not do what we intentionally, supposedly saying we're trying to do. That's where my concern is. So, so again, when we talk about prioritization of affordable homeownership for our residents, when we talk about ensuring that the folks who are living in these communities that have dealt with the crime, the, the blight, the issues, the disproportionate amount of divestment, when we talk about those individuals, how does this policy protect them? You know, I don't see it anywhere, and that is where my concern is. So, the question to the administration is, why not just put that in the pudding? Why not just write that out? How are we ensure that we're going to do that? If we don't have key performance indicators, if we don't have goals and objectives and specifically desired outcomes that we're willing to write down, then, then why are we talking about this? Like, that is the concern that I'm having, and that's the concern that I've constantly said. Again, we consistently hear this thing of equity over and over and over again, but we never put it out in a, in a plan that's actually executable. And that's what I'm asking the administration to do. For, for, for what you're going to send to the Board of Estimates, write out the things that we talked about, prioritizing residents to have access to affordable homeownership. I, I know the administration is not here yet, but this is where I'm at. The folks that we're going to stabilize these communities off of their backs, they should have the ability to live in those communities. They should not be displaced because some nonprofit has bought a property for $3,000, the, the, the property value in the area has gone up, they've stabilized the block, the speculator comes in, buys a property, he sells it, and now, their landlord knows that they can rent it for more, and their rent goes up from $1,200 to $1,500 overnight. That's what we've seen around the country. Why not put that specifically in a language associated with what we're doing here? That is a simple question. So, that's why I can tell, I'm consistently asking the council, let's focus on fixed pricing, which is going to get voted on tomorrow, and I'll ask the administration, let's focus on fixed pricing, because that's where the concern of, that lies today in this hearing. So, I, so the question is, simple question, where does it say in, in the proof of pudding? Where does it say in the writing that we're going to vote on tomorrow, the, the supporting documentation that we have in the Board of Estimates? You know, I don't see it, and I'm wondering why don't we just write it out in there?
Thank you, Council President. I think that we have shared values, shared goals, and shared objectives, and, and that's why this conversation is so important. I think, as the Commissioner has outlined, the, the two pieces being voted on tomorrow are about the fixed pricing and the standing agenda item, and the items that you're discussing are in the execution of it through the administrative processes of the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Deputy Chief of Staff, hate to stop you. One of the items, which is, which is Appendix 7, is processing procedures. So, I mean, it, it lays out what we're doing. It's not just the rubric associated for what folks are paying for. It's not just this one-line item that we're voting for. It's a detailed approach of this policy that the administration is bringing in front of the Board of Estimates. Because of the statutory nature of the city of Baltimore, it could completely skip the City Council. We had our chance at this through House Baltimore, through our Dollar House program. We didn't vote it out. We were fought aggressively by the administration on that. This is your Dollar House program. Why not lay out specifically how we protect and how we ensure that there's certain levels of equity that's built into this process that we have not seen on a collective basis through the city of Baltimore and its history? That is the question, because I don't see it, and it's more than just the two votes. It's, it's a lot of information in here.
It's a five-page doc, six-page document.
So, I do want to, there might, so after the discussion on the 90-day, there is an updated document that was submitted to the Board of Estimates that does have, for the first 90 days after BOE approval, priority will be given to Baltimore residents who wants to purchase properties to rehab and use as their primary residence. So, that was included.
How come we didn't get that? We knew that we had this hearing today. How come we didn't get that document?
That's just one bullet. That's it. That's the only update.
That's the one that covers on the first 90 days. Yes, that's in the, in the first piece of the background information.
Do you have that document that you can send us so the committee can see it?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, there's been other updates that have addressed some of the 12 properties question. So, some, all of these conversations that we've been having with you, we have incorporated into, Kate Edwards, Deputy Commissioner for DHCD Development Division. So, we have updated the document to reflect a lot of the items that you have pointed out, like as far as the 12 properties. We've updated it so that it's not, you don't have to finish all 12. You can finish one or two, like you were saying, and it just has to be 12 at any one time that you have at a, at one period of time. We also, I'm trying to think of the other thing I was going to point out about the 12 properties at a time. Huh? Yeah, we've changed the language around that, so it's vetting process. So, all of these changes have been incorporated into the document. We just were able to, because we just got your comments updated on Friday, so we were just able to get all of that submitted into Board of Estimates yesterday. So, that's why it's like, just was made, because we were trying to make sure that we addressed all of the comments that we've received prior to this hearing. So, I mean, I think the other part of it is that we have baked into the policy, as we were developing it, the $1 price point for homeowners, for people who want to purchase the property as their primary residence. We've also set a dollar price point for community land trusts. That's really speaking to that affordability piece, because the community land trusts are entities that will hold properties in perpetuity at an affordable rate. So, we're giving them that $1 price point to make sure that we can encourage that affordable homeownership. So, I think a lot of the points that we addressed, we may not have given you a background document that lays out all of those things, but we've been considering it and incorporating it into the policy itself as we've developed the policy.
So, you're still submitting things, but I guess we're asking for something finalized before this vote is taken.
Yeah, so it was submitted yesterday and finalized, so we.
So, in that note, it sounds like there needs to be a pause on this so that we can get the full picture of everything that's needed before an informed decision is made.
Council President.
Council President, you took the words out of my mouth. Well, some of these concerns from my colleagues, from the President, from you, from Councilman Bullock, Councilman Odet, what is the rush? Let's make sure we say what we say we're going to do. Council President, talk about equity, and I keep, you know, you throw it up in the air and see if it stick on the wall, because I have seen no equity in this at all. So, why are we rushing to get this to the Board of Estimates so fast? The fixed policy, I think, is great, but what about the people that live in their neighborhoods right now? And I can read you something else about gentrification that happened in Baltimore, and it's the truth. I don't have it in front of me, but my question again, what's the rush to get this to the Board of Estimates if there are still some concerns about this whole policy doesn't include even what President Mosby said? What's the rush? I think we should hold this up and then have a bigger conversation to address some of the concerns that a lot of these, my colleagues hear right now about this, what's missing in here.
If I may, I just wanted to, we did put this out for public community comment February of last year, so it's been over a year. We put it out again in September of 2023. So, it's not a prop, program that has been rushed. We've been very thoughtful in our approach to this and have been working with our community partners, our elected officials. For the past two years, we've been talking about this. This is not a new proposal. So, at this point, we are, we have pending applications that we would like to be able to process under this new policy. And so, that's a bit of the urgency, is that we would like to, we have people who are waiting to purchase properties under this policy that we would like to move those applications.
So, the average person in the city don't know nothing about the development. That's why we here as the council people, we represent people in our district. That's why we asking, and I'm asking, table this until we get a better understanding of what's not in this policy. It could have been three years ago, but if you go to the average community association, even if they got a land use, they don't have nobody sit on their land use that know about housing. So, they don't have a clue. That's why we here. We got to advocate for the residents in our community. If it was two years ago, it was three years ago. That's why we here again, saying, we need to hold this up and then find out how we make this better and make sure we include the people who still live in South Clifton Park, look like a war zone, who live in Dolly Park, look like a war zone, who live in Broadway East, look like a war zone, and then Greenmount, I mean, Greater Greenmount, look like a war zone. You ever rode through there? Look at it. It's a hole in a donut. Everything outside, that look great. And we talking about this and don't have no equity built in that? Again, my only question is, what's the rush?
And you've admitted yourself that policy is still being. And you've admitted yourself that policy is still being informed as you're trying to get the vote on this, but we, and if it took two years to at least get it out, get the information out, why, we're trying to figure out, why are we getting pieces of this instead of the whole complete thing? As you're still developing the policy, we, it, it's important. This is a big decision, very big decision. And we've all admitted that, um, there's inequities in this city. There is, um, formulations of gentrification. There is distrust. There's a whole lot of pieces that, um, are just left unanswered. And, um, it, it, at this point, we need the policies together, all in one piece, so our President can make an informed vote.
So, you know, I'm going to also, I understand the concern there. Um, the components in terms of, there isn't anything, you know, in terms of some minor language changes that were made based off of the comments, um, received and based off of the comments of the Council President. Um, and that is, you know, on, on me in terms of, I thought there was a process of updating through the Board of Estimates submission, submission process that would have provided the new language, um, because that language is background information and is not what is being voted on by the action that's being requested by the, by the Board. Um, these questions and so forth, I think that it's a fruitful discussion. I, we've had a fruitful discussion. We've been talking about the different pieces of what is already in existence and has been in existence, what is thoughtful to think about to change in terms of, um, some of the components and so forth. You know, we have clearly stated in other documents what, um, and is the process for block-level planning and, and putting forth, um, those decision-making processes, et cetera, because that is covered in, you know, the Framework for Community Development. It's covered in our workgroup meetings. It's covered in the, um, Neighborhood Subcabinet structure, et cetera. The component here today is that the, the question was asked earlier, what is changing tomorrow? And what is the vote, and what is changing tomorrow by the Board of Estimates? And what is changing tomorrow by the Board of Estimates is the price structure for the properties that are listed on, by To Be More website and the standing, um, Board of Estimates agenda item. The other items, um, that we're discussing apply across the board to any disposition of property, uh, you know, within the city of Baltimore at the agency, as well as whether or not it's also at the Department of Real Estate, et cetera, like. Um, but in terms of the fixed pricing and what the Board is approving tomorrow, it is approving those two items.
And this pricing is a trickling down effect of the whole piece. And because this city has been struggling and suffering, we as the representatives of this council and in, we're in these communities and we see this day in and day out. And, uh, we have residents that live this way. Why are we rushing this price? This price piece is part of the big puzzle. We need to do it together, and we need the information together, is what I think we keep saying.
Council Vice President, can I make a comment real quick?
Uh, Councilman Stokes.
This is a just, I'm going to read this. Most developers purchase run-down or cheap properties in low-income communities and build new properties. These properties tend to be more expensive, attract wealthier buyers, thus building the more expensive housing. For example, in East Baltimore, the average home price jumped from $65,000 and $2,000 to $203,000 in 200, 2010. That's exactly what I'm talking, this is documentation. I ain't make it up, somebody else wrote it. This is data. Data that is already in the system. So why, again, what's the rush?
I would like to address the question that's been posed, uh, multiple times about the rush. The rush is the urgency that we have to address this crisis in Baltimore. Uh, every day that we allow city-owned properties to remain in our hands and not in the hands of homeowners who want to redevelop and live in that property, we are having properties sitting vacant, abandoned. Um, and we know all of the things that come along with that. Um, we're not seeing the property tax dollars generated from those properties. And it's another day that those properties aren't in the hands of, of Baltimoreans that, that want to redevelop them. So that's what the rush is, and the concerns that we've heard today are all valid and legitimate, uh, but they don't relate to what's being voted on tomorrow. What's being voted on tomorrow is making it more affordable for our residents to acquire city-owned properties. It's making it faster for our residents to acquire city-owned properties. And the concerns about the process can all be addressed through administrative procedures, through DHCD, which we can continue to work with the council on, uh, in the execution and implementation of fixed pricing.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Uh, I'm going to address two pieces here. One is a question for the Law Department. Um, so the item that we're voting on is this brand-new document I just got maybe 30 seconds ago. Um, is, not we, but the, the, the Board of Estimates. Um, they're voting on the entire document, right? Or is this background material that is used to inform the, the BOE? Because what we're, I don't know what it, you know, the agenda item says, you know, fixed price and, you know, a, a permanent agenda item to be able to have houses, you know, or properties sold. Um, but the whole document is before the BOE. So the BOE is approving this entire policy that we are reviewing right now for the first time 30 minutes ago, 30 seconds ago.
Well, under the charter, the BOE deals with the fiscal aspect. So I assume the rest is background, because the Board of Estimates is never voting on an administration's executive policy. They would be there to approve the financial aspects that DHCD couldn't implement on its own. So I don't know exactly how it breaks out, but whatever it was intended to be, that's what the charter gives the BOE's responsibility, um, over the fiscal.
Is there a financial timeline date that, you know, this has to be done, the financial piece that you're mentioning?
Well, I, I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, the financial piece is a set price, and then it's also a standing order to the Board. And so my understanding is the, what they've said is the urgency is they want to use those two things sooner rather than later.
So, um, the second part of this was about the, um, the input on this. Um, I, I understand that there were two, you know, sets of public, but, or, you know, comment. Um, but when I circulated the document to several stakeholders, because I'm still connected with the community development field, um, many people said, I've never seen this before. I've never seen it. And so, um, this is so important that even if the BOE, the BOE is, is approving this, but, you know, what, what input it had, because it's so important, and we've all been, I mean, we've all been working as a team on this. And the fact that we just got this document, you know, through the BOE when the Council President, um, you know, had to pull it, and then the revised document 30 seconds ago, is frankly insulting. Um, and so I think that the, the, what we're trying to do here is to try to work together to do this right. Um, the fact that, you know, there's been some organizations that are critical, particularly to the lots and the side yards that never got to understand what this was about, um, is, is an issue as well. And we don't know how this all fits with the non-contiguous TIF and, you know, all of the other things that we're talking about. So, um, I think that, you know, we, we, we are asking, like, so the BOE meets tomorrow. The next board meeting is the 20th. We're asking for a two-week delay. Two weeks, that is all, so that we can work together on this. I realize that there's 300 properties in the mix. I want those properties rehabbed, absolutely, no question. Two weeks isn't going to kill them. So that we can have this time to go through some of this, because what it really shows is that if the, the BOE is doing those two items plus all this background information, is that the BOE is endorsing this process even though there are still some changes to it that need to be made. That's all. Thank you.
I do, I know that this was an item, um, I, I just want to touch on it briefly in terms of a couple of things that you brought up outside of the delay. I think that's a question, you know, in terms of administration, et cetera. But, um, this fixed pricing does not impact the TIF. So the TIF is, um, those properties will be identified. They will be put into the TIF district. And then those properties, as they're acquired, they will be put in and out for specific, you know, working with the communities where they're located. They will be put out, um, for specific development as kind of larger parcels. They will not be available necessarily on, um, as a, you know, fixed, as a component of this, because they're part of a larger program, and there's development money specifically tied to that specific address. So as the properties are acquired through INREM that are identified in the TIF, those get flagged actually as the TIF property, as part of the TIF district, and then are assembled for a larger component. So I just want to address that very quickly, that this does not impact the TIF properties.
Right, I think, um, I mean, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I, um, bring that up because, um, it's not just that. I use it as an example for, you know, all of the other things we're trying to do. I still don't understand how we avoid this problem of, you know, a cottage industry growing with somebody hitting refresh on the website all the time, and then, you know, applying for the properties, um, or even just, you know, the people who have time to do that. I mean, our nonprofits do not have time to sit by and see, you know, and maybe it's that the administration wants to work with the nonprofits ahead of time, and that's fine, that's fine. But, um, I want, I just don't think that it's strategic. And I'd also like to know with these 300 properties, are they in the middle of a, a block with other vacant properties? You know, what does that, um, look like? And then the last point, I just want to point, I just want to read from this email that I received from the Law Department on Wednesday, the 28th. I've been here, quote, "I have been here since the 70s, and we have never done a reverter."
That's not true.
So, I mean, this is, it's in writing...
I've talked to my attorney today. We've done three since 2018. So that person at the Law Department hasn't done those, but our attorney has done those. We've done three reverters since 2018. We've reviewed other properties for a reverter. So I'm, you know, yes, there's somebody from the 70s who isn't aware of the three reverters that we've done, but we've done those in DHCD.
Thank you.
So I heard in this discussion that we, um, you asked for two weeks. Can that be discussed, or can that be agreed upon?
Can, can I just get a little bit more clarity? What, so what are we asking to hold to do? Like, like, what is it that you all want to see done?
Mr. President?
Yeah, I, I think, um, I, I didn't specifically ask for that request, but I, I think the concern that, um, that Councilwoman Ramos did, and I believe Councilman, um, Stokes did. I think, I think the concern is, um, this is a very small variable, but important variable in a larger equation. And, um, we're hearing from the administration that the core competency that we hear all the time is equity. So when we talk about equity, and we talk about particularly the history of, of Baltimore, and, and, and we can say it, the history under our own belts, um, what I would probably gather to say is that if we did a disparity study on land disposition over the past five years, there would be a complete disparity. I think the concern that just sits with me is this program, how it will make it a more robust process, more efficient process, and a faster process, is providing a process and a way of disposition of land in the city of Baltimore that's already flawed easier to the folks that have the ability of taking advantage of that process. So if we don't build in, if we don't develop the intentionality to do all the things that the Deputy Chief of Staff laid out, and by the way, I, I couldn't have done a more eloquent job of laying those out. If we don't specifically put that in the policy, how can we say that that's the approach that we're taking? So this council, I'll, I'll speak for myself. What I've asked the administration is just specifically lay that out. Provide the prioritization of affordable homeownership for our paraprofessionals, for our folks that work in DPW, for our working-class folks that are paying $1,200, $1,300, $1,400, $1,500 in rent in communities that they've dealt with the crime and the grime and the blight and, and dealt with the issues, and provide them in a pathway of affordable homeownership, where now they're paying $900, $1,000, $1,100, $1,200. This is something that has been a mission of this council since day one. Uh, and I'm happy that we've gone down this fixed pricing pathway, which House Baltimore was intended to do, but we've done it without money, because we no longer have access to American Rescue Plan money to do so. But we've also done it without laying out the criteria to ensure that those inequities aren't there. Uh, so, so that's what I would say. I, I'm not sure if the administration would say that if we did a disparity study, we would clearly show disparities in land disposition. You know, I don't have in, any empirical data specifically or read a white paper over the past five years. That would, that's what my assumption would be. And I think that if all of us can agree right here, that this process is just going to make it easier for folks to buy property. So if that is the case, why won't we assume that that's just, just going to exacerbate the current problem that we have with disposition of property in the city of Baltimore and be a variable in the concerns that we all have? So we don't see a Green Mount West, and so we don't necessarily see a Johnson Square, but we see mixed communities where all folks have access to properties, and we don't put folks in communities to stabilize those communities, knowing that in three, four, or five years, they'll be displaced because they can no longer afford the rent?
Yeah, and thank you for that, Mr. President. And, and I, I want to reiterate what the Deputy Chief said, what the Mayor has said, what the Chief of Staff has said, is that the Mayor and this administration is committed to equitable community development. That has not changed, and that will not change. In this case, that does just not seem like the appropriate material for what's going before the BOE. What's going before the BOE is simply the fixed pricing changes, the actual numbers. When it comes to the nitty-gritty, you know, I worked in office equity and civil rights. I can speak to it all day, right? We can deal with that in a manner, which is the administrative policies, the procedures that govern how DHCD will go about operationalizing the program. And I think that that is where this stuff needs to be hammered out. But for what's going before the BOE, as we just clarified, this is just background information. The BOE is not voting on the op, this operational, the extra background that's in here. That's in there just to make sure that the folks, the five members who sit on that board, that they have some context about what it is that they're being asked to vote on. That's, that is exactly what that is. It's nothing more, it's nothing less. It's just background.
Mr. Deputy Director, in all fairness to the administration, and I know that this is not, um, this has absolutely nothing to do with, you know, not providing the council all the information or trying to lead the council down a pathway of what's not intended from the administration. So I want to be very clear before I say this.
Yes.
But all that you've said, and all that's been said today about the importance of, um, you know, how does the APA, how does the procedural information look in, 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 in going down this path? What has also been presented, so i, i, if you, if you utilize the two in conjunction, what has also been presented today to this council is that there's 200-odd some folks waiting for this to be approved. And, and that question, that, that answer was provided through a question of what is the urgency? So you, we can't talk out of both sides of our mouths. We can't say that it's urgent, because we have folks that are waiting in a pool to have access to these properties through this program, and on the same side say, oh, no, we're just voting on two items. And then, and the Board of Estimates, once they vote on those two items, will come up with the process and the procedure of how we dispose of the property. This is how the city of Baltimore has always worked. And what I will say is, and, and I've been a broken record on this since the day I got here, and I'll continue to be a broken record, that that is of concern. We cannot utilize these terms of equity. We can't continue to come up with these fancy, neat programs and not protect the folks that lived through the crime and the grime and not develop ways of our working-class folks having access to affordable homeownership. And any policy that the administration brings forward should explicitly lay out while we're doing that or while we're not doing that. You might come to me and say, hey, we're not here to protect affordable homeownership in this particular policy, and here's why. Because we think that this mixture, or we think that this works, or we think that this helps this community. If, if that is, if that is the approach, then communicate it. But if the approach is the core competencies that you guys laid out today, why not explicitly write it in the policy? That's all the councils, that's all the Council President is asking for.
I also want to recognize a member of the committee, Councilman Glover of the 13th District. And we also have, um, our, uh, Law Commissioner Thompson that has, uh, been here in the whole discussion as well. discussion as well. And Councilman Glover, you have a question, comment on this subject?
Yeah, just want to, just want to comment on some things. You know, for me, you know, being a first-term in the council on things of nature, this hearing is kind of more of a informational hearing, you know, to me. I'm learning as I go along. But the one thing I do want to say, and that I know is that, you know, I've been a product of Baltimore, born and raised here my entire life. I grew up in Chapel Hill Homes. I've gone to communities in East Baltimore where we've seen gentification, we've seen, we heard conversations in some of the past administrations where we were going to be getting X, Y, Z, once they built whatever it was they was going to build. I have yet to see those things come to existence. I look at places like the EBDI community, I see that community where, over close to almost, for me, 20 years, there's no development there. And, and what I see is that, and what I feel is like we're waiting for the right developer, or the right, the right person to just come along to sell this piece of land, or to build on this piece of land. And I don't think, once their land has those buildings and things of the nature on that property, there are going to be individuals that look like me, that lived in that community for so many years, have an opportunity to go back there. There's a, at times, miscommunication, probably at times with, with housing. We, we know the conversations that are coming our way. We do take time to sit back and try to educate, you know, myself on the do's and the don'ts, and the law, when it comes to, you know, housing. I don't know at all, I'm not an expert in housing. But I think that the community would gain a better respect in a definition of which way housing, or even administration is trying to go, if we seen those liaisons inside those community associations. So I'm not doubting that they're not putting out the message, and it could have been two, three, four years ago, but it would not hitting the people with their at, you know, Grandma don't have access to emails, Grandma not, you know, picking up the phone and, and having those conversations with, you know, housing or the administration. But Grandma, they are attending these community association meetings. And they, they come into those meetings because they want to know the information about their communities. And what I've seen is not, I just don't see that's happening in our community. And it has, it has to change. Like, I've, I've noticed over, and even in DACD, where at times they're having conversations with the community developers, or maybe the nonprofit organizations, and those community groups that are living in certain communities, but they're not having that conversation with us. They're not having that conversation with those community people that live there. It's solely between them, maybe a developer, or maybe an organization, and we just don't know, unless the organization themselves, or developer, is bringing it to our attention. And I think that's where it's at. It's, it's a lot of distrust. I can't pinpoint and point at just one administration, but I'm going off of me being an individual, born and raised here my entire life, and seeing that there were opportunities for us to go back into our neighborhoods. We were the one that made our neighborhood, we were the ones that made our neighborhood great. It's not there anymore. The rents are skyrocketing high. We're not educating our community on what's coming to our community. Is, 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 the word equity don't even exist. It's not there. So what I'm just asking, as we move forward, and as we look through the documentation and things of the nature, that we do take our time and do it right this time, because it was never done right in the past. That's all I'm asking. And if I gotta be a, excuse me, if I gotta be a a-hole to get out there, I'm telling you one thing about me, I don't care about the position of being a councilperson. I care about my community. I care about Baltimore City. I care about those people that feel they've been left out, forgotten in this town. And I am here to fight for those individuals, and I will do it if I have to die. So I'm making it a point to be clear. Have those community liaisons, come to these community association meetings, so they can know exactly what's going on in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, in this discussion, it was presented that you give us two more weeks. As Councilman Glover just mentioned, there are organizations that have been dealing with this specific subject forever, like the NAACP. I could go down the list of organizations that have been out there on the ground, dealing with blight, and just trying to help individuals, and just, just working nonstop, and, and asking for two weeks and giving us more information about, along with this fixed pricing, is what we seem to be asking. Comments? Or can we, can that happen?
The message has been received.
Even though we know it takes longer than two weeks, we're, you know, we, we need some more time. Any more questions for the administration, or we're going to go ahead and see if there are, is some public testimony? I think we do have some in-person we'll start with. And speaking of blight, flight, blight?
Bmore.
Bmore, okay. State your name, and you're on.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nika Namdi. I am the founder and Chief Operating Officer of Fight Blight Bmore, and the Executive Director of the Stop Oppressive Seizures Fund. And for simplicity, clarity, and transparency, we think the policy, the fixed pricing policy is good. We understand that this specific bill is really only speaking to the handling of pricing under the governance of the Board of Estimate. But the last hour I spent listening is very clear that price matters, but the policies that administer the process of acquisition actually matter more. And so that's a, a point where it's clear that the administration and the council, as well as DCHD, can, could spend some time getting on this, getting on the same page. Our three main concerns deal with accessibility of the program is something that we heard for everyday people. Like, the, the fixed pricing model is good, but we need, we are going to need programming that helps people in communities develop their capital stack, whether that's through grants, or loans, or some other kind of co-op model. And so that is something that we definitely need, that we definitely need to have addressed. The second, and probably most important piece, is that the slum lords and the speculators just should not be able to use this program outright, period, full stop. Like, these folks have destroyed community and ended lives, and really, they should be in, you know, this is organized, this isn't happening ones and twos. There really should be a criminal investigation, right? But I'll digress, because that's a discussion we probably should be having with the state's attorney's office, because instead of locking people up for standing on corners, you really need to be locking people up for keeping 10, 15, 20, 100 properties in horrible condition in our community. That's, that's a Rico case if I ever, if I ever saw one, right? And so, the, the third point is, goes to this, the notion of the LDA that I heard the councilperson mention, in particular, in the side lot, for the side lot program, there is a restriction on the side lot program that prevents side lot purchasers from building on their lot for at least 10 years. And to be clear, if someone is living in a house and needs to build on the house in order to age in space, in place, in order to enable returning citizens, or college students, or someone else, multi-generational, living in the home, they should be allowed to build on their lot. If they want to build on their lot to create a little corner store, or to create a hair salon, or to create an insurance agent, or a doctor's office, or whatever the case may be, they should be able to build on the lot. And so those are our three major points that, that give us some kind of concern about what is going to happen behind the fixed pricing, behind the fixed pricing model. And the last thing I'll say is, it's tax sale season, and so if you know anything about our work, you know that it's, it's serious business right now. We got about, we have more than 5,000 owner-occupied and heirs' properties in Baltimore on a tax sale list. So if you know somebody, anybody, whose property taxes are not paid, they can contact the SOS Fund. You can find us on the web at www.thosfun.com, or you can call our office at 443-810-3665, because we do have some significant funds, both through the city programs, the state programs, and private capital to, to get out of the door before April 30th. So that is my testimony.
Thank you. Bill Snife, I'm sorry, Sef, Senf, you can give us the correct pronunciation. How are you? The, that button with the people on it, right on top.
Semft.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman, and I am one of your constituents, and have been all my life.
Yes, you are.
So I'm here today in my capacity as Senior Director of Real Estate and Development for St. Vincent de Paul, which, as many of you may know, is very involved in housing issues, working with homelessness, food security, early childhood education, programs all over the city. And one of our programs involves affordable housing, and we've been working for better part of two years now to, to attempt to acquire vacant houses, to basically fix them up, so that they can be affordable housing. And the process is daunting, to, to say the least. There are a number of ways that you can acquire houses, right? Through the OHAD auction, through which vendor lien, which I would like to see reinvigorated, also on the private market. Keep in mind here, we're talking about vacant houses with VBN notices on them, that have been determined to be uninhabitable. And so for the most part, the neighbors would really like to see them fixed up. And, and obviously, nobody's being displaced there because the house is currently uninhabitable. So we're very much in favor of this policy, because the process involved with trying to acquire a house, and also the burden, frankly, that it puts on DHCD, is just not working. I work closely with a representative of DHCD for the Northwest District, who literally has hundreds and hundreds of properties that she is responsible for, and numbers of community associations, and just understaffed and overwhelmed, frankly, to take care of this process. So anything that can improve the efficiency, I think is a step forward. For the most part, these properties have negative value. They really don't have a economic value, per se. When they're purchased by speculators, like at an OHAD auction, usually it's because it's an out-of-town group quite often, who just thinks, wow, this is the last affordable place, I can get a vacant house in Baltimore for $14,000. It's amazing. They don't realize what they're stepping into. And one of the reasons why I wanted to testify today, because actually, I came prepared because Councilwoman Ramos shared this fixed pricing policy dated January 22nd, coming from the Law Department. But I think we're sort of beyond that at this stage in the discussion, because I had a number of comments on that policy. But one of the things I think is a reality check, is that for these vacant houses, the renovation of them is, is just an extremely difficult job. And I think to expect that a individual, if they could buy a house for a dollar, can manage the renovation of a completely gutted-out, vacant, uninhabitable house is a lot to ask of an individual homeowner. So one of the suggestions in the policy that I was, I think would be helpful, is something that would say, to protect those homeowners, that when they come to purchase a house for a dollar, they really should have an MHIC licensed contractor who's giving them a fixed-price contract on the renovation. And when I say fixed-price contract on the renovation, I really mean that, because what happens is, a homeowner might acquire a house for a dollar, and find out that it costs $250,000 to actually get it into habitable condition. Speculators like to buy houses that need $20,000 to $30,000 worth of work, so that they can basically turn them into rental housing, that they can, you know, quite often seek a Section 8 tenant, or get some way to extract economic value out of it. But they really don't want to touch, in many cases, these ver, these vacant, uninhabitable houses. And so St. Vincent de Paul, we're willing to do that work, but it is, I mean, you deserve combat pay for going into some of these houses, because essentially, there's all kinds of stuff living in them. It's dangerous, frankly. They're structurally unsound, and it's, it's a real thing to take on one of these houses. So I'm personally, as a lifelong city resident, in favor of seeing any vacant house developed. I am concerned that we're, and you heard from Commissioner Kennedy, the incredibly complex job that they have to do with managing and trying to achieve whole-block outcomes is, is really a high, high goal. So I have a lot more comments that I could share with you, but the bottom line is, to protect individuals, I think there really needs to be something in place to protect them when they acquire a house for a dollar, because that is really what's going to improve the city.
And the council president would like to make a comment after you, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments of clarity. So I, I think when we talk about individuals and access to property, we're just really speaking to prioritization. So an individual who would like to reside and purchase one of these properties, obviously from a technical skillset perspective, resources, network perspective, they're going to be lower on a totem pole than, say, an organization that does it every day, or a nonprofit developer that does it every day. So the idea, and I think you've heard the term prioritization a couple of times, is just provide them a prioritization. So the administration has agreed for this first tranche of properties to allow a 90-day grace period for individuals to kind of have access and understand and know what properties are out there. So definitely excited that there's some prioritization, not to the level or degree that we're talking about. When you talk about protection for, you know, property owners, and you talk about ensuring that there's a qualified MHIC contractor, when you talk about ensuring that they have preapproval to actually do the construction work, when we talk about ensuring that their safeguards are in place, like maybe a requirement for first-time home buyership workshops and programs, that was House Baltimore. So this council aggressively pushed, for all the things that you just mentioned, in a program that the administration fought tooth and nail to, to try to kill. I think what we're here today to talk about is not that any of us want a, a program that provides, again, a more robust and more efficient way of dispositioning of property. I think what we don't want to do is exacerbate the current issue around land disposition that we have, and the disparities around them. And I think what has been said is that if we don't intentionally write that out through our policy, and as legislators, that's what we do, we write policy, if we don't write that through policy, that is not going to happen just by happenstance. It has to be some level of intentionality. So, you know, I, I, I heard your, your testimony, and I appreciate it. I would say we agree with it wholeheartedly, but we don't want to put the cart before the horse. So we don't want to make a, a system better that's already has a huge amount of inequity and disparity associated with folks that we call ourselves fighting for, and that we speak up for, and that's supposedly built into our core competency. So I appreciate your testimony. Thank you.
Yeah, and I agree with the words of the Fight Blight Baltimore representative, that really, the policy is a key part of this. It's not just about the disposition price. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving along, there's no one else that has checked off, but is there anyone present that would like to speak? We'll go with you, and then you can go behind her. Some of you might have signed your name but didn't check off you wanted to testify.
Good afternoon, Council and Administration. Alice Kennedy and your team. What I would like to just put on the record is one-
Say who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good afternoon again. Look, I'm like, you know me. I'm Yolanda Jaggs. I'm the CEO of Park Heights Renaissance, which is a nonprofit working to redevelop the Park Heights community. For the record, I just want to say that I think that a lot of work has been put into this- of work has been put into this. I am very concerned, based on my own experience working in city government, there is always good intention to correct policy. If we correct one part of a policy and not the other, oftentimes we walk away, not intentionally, but because of capacity, because of other things that happen. And I'm afraid and concerned that we will not adjust some of the policy things that we all know need to, we all know need to be adjusted. Alice has stated on the record that there will be some prioritization, but it, again, is verbal. And God forbid, something happens at any given time and we don't have that in the policy. And I will say that this is something that communities, residents are speaking about. They are not clear. Even though it was put out for public notice, we too, and we're working with Alice and her team a lot, we still, it takes time to really understand and grasp this. And I think that there are enough community concerns to grant this two weeks at minimum for all of us to give a little bit more feedback. And if the policies are being effectuated right now as we're speaking, like changes, I think two weeks will at least give us the opportunity to see what we've heard today. And we believe Alice and her team, but why not put that in writing so that we're all feeling very secure that it will happen and we may not walk away and forget to come back and address what we know are some process changes that need to happen, that we continue to see in these communities. Yes, there's a lot of awards going on across the city, but the outcomes, I'm not so sure are always in line with what we want them to be. And I'm also concerned that speculators are waiting right now, right? They are waiting right now. If there's no prioritization for homeownership or whatever that specific community has outlined that they want to happen in that community, the speculators are gonna come. It's first come, first served. There may be some criteria, but they're ready right now. Homeowners that we said that we are making preference for, they're not ready. And even if they are ready, even if they have good credit, it is gonna be incredibly difficult to get financing for these properties from the homeowner perspective. It will be easier for a developer to get financing, but I'm really concerned, and in our area, we are very focused on homeownership outcomes. And I think that it's worth the time to really make sure that these things are buttoned up and not done after the fact.
Thank you so much for that important testimony. And now, are you Joe?
I am.
You come on.
Good afternoon. My name's Joe Meyerhoff, and I've worked with a group for the last four or five years on a solution to our affordable housing crisis. And the elephant in the room here today is nobody's talked about financing. And to President Mosby's point, I'm sorry, Councilman Stokes isn't here, there are, there's already legislation on the city's books with financing approved that does two things. It, it allows for a massive scale of affordable housing that can be sold to nobody that makes more than 115% of median income. So now, all your housing that is being built using this financing is restricted for 30, 40, maybe in perpetuity, to 115% of median income. The other thing that no one has talked about today is affordable housing for renters. And so the issue with affordable housing for renters, and everybody that's in this room will tell you, it's impossible to build. And the reason is people need what are called capital stacks of 30, 40, maybe 45% of the capital needed to build a project. And that's why they aren't built. So also included with this program is funding for affordable multifamily, multiple-income housing, where 80% of the residents in that housing could make no more than an median average of 60% of AMI. 60% of AMI. The other 20% would be offered at market rate to people who also want to live in those communities. And it meets some of the major goals that everybody that works with urban planning wants to see, is mixed-income, multifamily communities and neighborhoods. This financing has been specifically set up under Section 62 of Baltimore City's charter. It is 100% compliant with it. The only housing that can be used for this financing is what we are all talking about here today, which is vacant and abandoned housing. And the reason nothing is happening is because nobody has figured out how to solve at scale both the appraisal gap and the capital stack issues that we face today. So I'm gonna give you a couple numbers.
Gotta wrap it up?
Yeah, I'm gonna wrap it up. So I'm gonna give you a couple of numbers just for you to think about. If you built 50,000 homes, you're gonna spend, on average, $75,000 bridging the cost of those homes. So that's $3.5 billion right there. You take what Alice Kennedy is talking about for the city, that's another $2.5 billion. You're at $6 billion before you turn around. Now you throw in multifamily housing, and let's say you want to build 50,000 homes, you have to build a minimum of 100,000 multifamily units and an average cost of $300,000 a unit. That adds up to $30 billion. So you all are sitting here talking today about Band-Aids, small solutions. Council president, you want to do something that's at scale, that deals with your income inequality issues? This is it. And it's already here. It's been approved by the Department of Housing and Community Development. It has been approved by the city council president, I'm sorry, the city solicitor, and also the Department of Financing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's all I have on my in-person list. Moving to online, and I see a hand raised. And we're, Kate Latar, can you hear us? Kate Latar, you're on for testimony. Kate Latar, going once, twice, last call.
Um, she said she muted.
We'll see if it's from this end. You check on your end. You're not muted, but we can't hear you. Um, I, my suggestion would be to turn in your written testimony because we can't hear you on this end. So now, we're going to move on to see if we can, if someone, if anyone else, we're looking to see, raise your hand if you want to testify quickly. And we don't see anyone else with a hand raised. Are there any other, okay, okay, that's it? Any more, any final comments from Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to the committee to, for your great questions and for your attention to this issue. And thank you, Madam Chair, for holding the hearing and for the council president on your, leadership on this. And thanks to everybody here. Again, the fixed price is, is fine. I would like to have the CDCs also be, the CDOs also be able to get properties for a dollar. We can talk about that later. But the fixed price is fine. It's important. We have to do it. That part of it. The rest of the policy around first come, first served, I have major, major concerns. Because I, again, I don't know how we can be intentional with a first come, first served policy. There's just no way. And if the BOE is getting this background information saying first come, first served, that to me is a problem because essentially, the BOE is saying, yep, this is how we're gonna do it. That's great, right? There's also been no sort of APA regulation, any of that for the, for the, anybody to comment on if it's a regulatory issue. And so we, that, that is the biggest concern. And I, I just would hope that you would work with us on this because we're all on the same team here, you know? We, the ultimate goal is to get the properties done and to have mixed-income communities doing it. And it is extremely important for our city. There's no question about it. But, you know, we have to be a team doing this, and that is not what is happening here. So I look forward to hearing back from the mayor's office. I think it's worth giving us two weeks, a month, I mean, something to be able to, there's obviously changes still being made here, and I just think that's fair. So thank you again, Madam Chair, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Mr. Janela, you comment?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna, you know, as we close, just thank the council, of course, for your invaluable feedback and for the productive deliberation on this. I also just want to reiterate in closing that Mayor Scott took office, he committed to the city that he would address the pervasive issue of vacant properties. And that work is happening and is in full force. And this is just a testament to that work that is happening. And of course, you know, we look forward to continuing to partner with the council on implementation and on thinking of strategic and transformative ways to address the issue of vacant properties in our city. There's a shared interest and a shared goal between the council, the administration, the residents of Baltimore City, the developers. Nobody wants to see vacant properties in any neighborhood. And we're doing the work to address that. So thank you.
Any other final words from the administration?
Just want to reiterate our gratitude, and we've heard the feedback, we've heard the discussion, and we're gonna bring it back to the team. So thank you.
Okay. At this point, this dialogue is dismissed and hope some of our asks are considered as we move forward before the Board of Estimates meeting. Thank you.